Work session, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, hybrid meeting, accessible in person or via Zoom. Item number one, E nine-one-one millage language proposal, Vance Strangl.
Good morning.
Morning.
As everybody knows, it is election time, et cetera, not yet, but we're getting there. So let's, this is the year we have to redo our millage. I got approval from my authority board to bring this language forth. They've, it has changed just slightly, we took the word renewal out because of, of the way it was written, so. But, so nine-one-one has, has really done very well. The voters approved our, the last millage that increased first time after a lot of years. We were able to re- put into place our six months of operational expenses. And I had been building a capital improvement fund. Reason for that is we have a lot of large projects that are just natural to the system. One of those is, of course, you know, we had the CAD project that kind of went sideways and we worked that out. That is going to be coming through with Motorola, that's a little over five hundred thousand dollars. Believe refreshing our nine-one-one phone system within the next couple of years, that is likely to cost upwards of three hundred thousand dollars. The desks that the dispatchers are operating from are now about fifteen years old. And they don't make parts for them anymore, they're lift desks. So when one of those breaks, it's going to have to stay broken, so that is going to be upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The point is, is that there are plenty of projects we have coming up that are not optional. There are things that we will have to do, or it would, it would mean a change in service in sense that be less efficient. It would still get things done. I am asking in this for a increase from the point nine-nine-zero-seven to the one-point-oh. As you recall, in twenty seventeen, twenty-eighteen, I asked for a one-point-one. And the board asked me to roll that here, to take that back to one-four. So to keep us on the right track, I can tell you one of the big projects that I haven't brought forth to the board or discussion yet is significant, but it would improve radio communications across the county, including inside of many buildings. That would be the intended purpose. The officers go inside of some of these buildings, the firefighters go inside of some of these buildings, they don't get signaled to the radios or pagers. So this project that I, I have rather on my head is expensive. I can tell you another county just did something like this for one tower, it was one-point-three million. It's a, it's a crazy idea right now, I have to get a lot more information, it is literally just a blush idea, just in the very beginnings, so. With that, I, I'm asking for the one-mill and to keep us on track and continuing to build that capital improvement fund for those reasons.
Much did you say was in your, so to speak, fund balance?
Right now, including the non-spendable six months operation, we are about one-point-three million. We basically have a full year of operational.
Okay.
You want to put this in the August or the November?
August.
Okay.
Yep, that's what we did last time and.
Right, so even though it's, it's not a significant raise, it is from a point nine-nine-point-zero-seven, which has been lowered by Headley.
Yep.
By law, so you're asking to go back to the one-point-zero.
Yes.
It does have to go on as an increase.
Yes, yep, just like we did last time.
Yep, it can't be a renewal. All right. Any other commissioners have any questions for Vance, please? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look at putting that on at the next meeting is what I'm anticipating. Is that all right with the commissioners? Which will be at our April thirteenth meeting. Okay, item number two, Veterans Memorial Park, Larry Foster's here from the veterans, and I believe you're the chairman of that, am I correct? You're not the chairman, I thought you were, okay, sorry, you're the head of this, though.
So today I'm here to request permission to use the front yard, pretty much. I have talked to a couple of different counties, I've traveled to, it's not actually, I look at different veteran memorial walls. I'd like to try and do something right in our front yard for that. These are a few designs that other counties have, I have went, I got some pricing. But without permission to use that front yard, that pricing won't be worth anything right now. I'd like to put up by the cannon, I'd like to put some monument walls, mini walls, wrapped around it. And then I'd like to put about a dozen benches facing that. So I, I need permission to use that front property. And then from there I can go further on and talk with zoning, talk with our maintenance and get more pricing information at that time. Phase, yep. And I've, I've went off pricing, I've got some actual firsthand pricing from some local companies here, I've talked to other communities. One of these that are pictured in here was almost three million dollars and the county got a millage for it, just for that. I don't think that's feasible at all. There are lots of options out there to put up mini walls that would cost approximately ten thousand dollars per wall. All this to be off of donations and grants, though, nothing will be on the county side.
Would it be possible to have this staked out at some point in time? So we could have an idea technically what ground's going to be covered in, roughly what it's going to look like.
Yes, I can do that.
That'd make it a whole lot easier, I mean, just so people could visualize this, okay, you say all this stuff, you don't have a picture, which I understand. Because I used to do zoning and stuff like that, so I mean, if you can get it staked out or stuff like that, so we have an idea.
Right.
I think it's going to be and all this other stuff, so.
Yeah, I'll get with maintenance, because I know there are sprinklers out there, I was informed this morning to make sure nothing gets hit out there. But I could get that all staked out and for approximates and that way you guys could see a general idea of what we're looking to do. This wall will have the ability to put any veteran in our county's name on there, it's not just for war-related veterans, it's, it's actually for every single veteran in our community. So it's a real big thing, a lot of other counties just do for combat veterans only, or certain war-era veterans, we're looking for every veteran in our community. So it's going to be a big project, it's something that can be handled, though, and I feel that we have enough support already in the community from the people I have talked to for funding, donations, and like I said, we're going to try for some grants as well.
I look at it, it's an improvement.
It is.
Personally, but I'm on, I'm on board myself, because, you know, and I would say at this point, you know, Larry, you got some things, you know, Tim just pointed out some things, but you know, there's a lot of work that's ahead of us thing, but I think my standpoint, I'm, I'm a positive for it. So, any other commissioner want to be? I don't think, yeah, I don't think you need anything yet, but, but that's a good idea, that the zoning does need to be checked out, you know, and I'm glad, and Bill, he's right, but he's back there, I'm sure he's on board already, too. Yep, so. Oh, keep us informed, I guess, anybody else?
Do you donate some money?
Okay, all right.
All right, so, real good idea, thanks for coming forward, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. Hey, item number three, Roscommon County Transit Authority Millage, Steve DeBois, come on up, Steve.
Where are you going today?
Good, you? All right. Steve did come into my office a week ago last Monday and him and I sat down and he brought all his, his budgets and in this, in this spot, with a five-year plan, wasn't that what, wasn't it, Steve? Yep, five-year plan and what they're anticipating on doing. And after, personally, after taking a look at that, they've asked that they, and Steve's the representative and he has a board, too, so he's just here as the representative of that board, so they're going to bring their millage proposal forward, so if you want us to talk about that again, go ahead, just to bring everybody up to date.
Um, as far as, you want me to start, like from the?
As far as what you're, just a small thing on what you're talking about going from a half a mill, you want to put it out for a mill.
We're looking at it for an increase to a one-mill, we're currently at a half a mill, which we've had since inception, as far as I know, as far back as I can see, it's always been a half a mill. Are we all looking to increase that for a one-mill? And basically that increase is going to cover our rising costs of labor, rising, everything's going up right now, as, as everybody can see driving around the community, you know, gas doesn't cost the same, parts, auto parts, tires, everything is going up. And we're also looking to incorporate into this millage our out-of-county service that we offer. Currently, the out-of-county service that we offer has no millage money involved, it's all fares, so the fares are extremely high, which most people in the community can't afford. The fares that we need to charge to be able to cover the, the expenses that we have. So we're looking to, as part of this millage, to bring that into, into that as well, to make it affordable for everybody in the community. For in-county, non-emergency medical be a ten-dollar each way and out-of-county be twenty dollars each way, basically, so that's the combination of the two. Why we're looking for the one-mill.
Two of the big, two of the big items that were in that budget were, was number one, number one was wages. And that wages have had to increase exponentially with the times right now and just to retain people. Not, and not only to recruit more people, but to retain the people that they've got. You know, and you look at things like now and you see these, whether you see it as a signing bonus or if you see it as an hourly increase. If they get a four-dollar increase, I don't begrudge anybody if they can get a four-dollar increase an hour, more power to them. But at the same time, those costs are going to stick, you're not going to take that money away from them once you give it to them, I just don't see that happening. And the other one that was, might even have been even more with the fuel cost. Everybody knows what fuel is now, you ought to see what that figure is for what they're going to have to pay and anticipating paying in the years to come, so. You just look at fuel cost and then you're also going to have the upkeep of vehicles and so forth. So there's, after taking a good look at it, probably a little higher than I'd like to see it, but I can, I can see where it's justified with the anticipated cost, so. Anybody else have anything for Steve?
I got a couple of questions. If you get this millage, are you going to establish routes, like a, a stops, like down fifty-five, so see buses up and down the road all the time?
Negative, but basically we have to go by federal guidelines and we don't have the, the population to establish fixed route system. Because we'd be basically running empty buses down, down those routes, so it's all demand response, so it's based on demand, demand of the community. And the routes are built, built around that, basically.
What about jury duty? A lot of people don't necessarily have the means to get to and from jury duty, is that something that you guys would be doing?
I think, I think we do that now, so it's, it's all by demand, if they call for a ride, then we basically put it into that, you know, workable thing to make it happen for them.
Okay, so if they don't have a ride, how much in advance notice are they going to need for that? That sometimes they don't get a lot of time, I don't know, I don't know how that works.
So, so we do, we do basically on-the-spot calls, I mean, typically we like to have twenty-four hours notice, a twenty-four hours notice, it gives, that's what starts to build the routes. And then we, we fill in around that based on the, the demand of what they're calling right away. We do probably fifty percent of our business is people that are calling right now, hey, I need a bus, how soon can you be here? The other fifty percent is stuff to schedule ahead of time. So it's best to schedule ahead of time if you have that advance notice, if you don't have that advance notice, then we accommodate the best we can based on what we have on the road at that particular time. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, you know, I'm not going to lie about that, but we do do the best we can with what we got to work with.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Mr. Melburn.
I believe the people will value service and I think you have an exceptional department, so thank you.
Okay, we will bring that forward, I do appreciate your time and effort as far as coming in, trying to explain that, and I do appreciate you getting me up to speed on it, okay? Sharing those figures with me, all right?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, that motion will be brought forward for April thirteenth. Okay. Item four, Roscommon County, Roscommon County Millage Restoration, Restoration, yeah. Restoration proposal, discussion of the whole, we had some discussion on that last reading and we brought it, brought it forward for this meeting right here. I've been looking at our figures, I've since gotten with Jody and she's gotten me a lot of information right here. But by law, we can be at a four-point-six-oh, and right now we're at a three-point-five-six-something. Um, you know, we've got the same problem Vance alluded to as far as actually, you know, infrastructure is what we're, what you're talking about right here. Every day I come, I don't come in here every day, but the days I come in here, I park across the street, I tell you what, that parking lot is pretty bad. And that's something, you know, I was hoping that the ARP money could cover that, but it can't. So that's just one item, you know, you're dealing with a building here that's got a flat roof on it. And where, where it's ugly head someday, too, so. I think, I don't, Bill and I haven't had a conversation per se, but I think Bill being our new maintenance person, he's probably already compiling a list of what some of the things that we're going to be looking at doing right here. And I also do know, I haven't talked to Andy, but I know that he's working on some upgrades to our IT, am I correct? And because we're basically just getting by one meeting to the next with what we've got, so we need to have some upgrades there. That millage will, if we could put that on and we would be successful to be able to get the restoration millage to go back to four-point-six-oh. That would raise just over one-point-five million dollars a year for us. Now, if we don't need that, we don't have to levy that. So if we only need half of that, we only have to authorize half of that, that would be done through a budgeting process. One of the things I think we're going to need to do, do this year, Jody and I just talked on it, just real, we're going to have to do two budgets. One with anticipation with what we would use that money on if we got it, and one with if we're not successful. So, um, we haven't had a raise, the general fund has not had an increase, it's just been reduced since nineteen ninety-four. Three year, or five years between from nineteen seventy-five all the way to two thousand and eight, there was an increase every year. And in two thousand and nine, this is when the recession was, we went down five-point-three-five in oh-nine, seven-point-four-nine decrease in two thousand and ten. Ten-point-eight-nine decrease in twenty-eleven, a decrease of six-point-two-seven percent in twelve and a point-one-eight reduction in two thousand and thirteen. Now, in the subsequent years, we went back up, but that's a combination of being down thirty percent. And in the years following, from two thousand and fourteen through twenty-one, we're still down seven percent to that, to that thirty percent, but we haven't even got ourselves back to the breakeven point yet, so. Commissioner Melvin did allude to the fact of it's getting more and more difficult to do our budget every year and to balance our budget, and we've been succeeding in doing that, but there's not going to be anything extra out there. Now, at this point, my feeling that we need to put it, we need to put that on for a restoration millage back to the four-point-six-oh. Like I say, it would be putting it on the commissioners to implement how much money is spent, but we don't have to levy it all if we don't need it. So, at the same time, if we were successful in putting it, with Headley being what it is, that would start to lower, lower, lower immediately. So, any other thoughts, I don't know if I explained myself correctly or not.
I felt over the last few meetings.
Hey, any other commissioner on the way in? Nope.
Well, yeah, I agree with you, I haven't been here, I've got the shortest tenure so far, but from the stuff that we've had, it's getting tougher and tougher. Like you said, if we can't announce a budget, we're going to have to start cutting projects and services, and I don't think they want to do that, or we want to do that, so.
Well, I want to, I'll use nine-one-one for an example, because Vance did a wonderful job of presenting his case, but, you know, they're just looking, going back to the one percent, which isn't much of an increase. This project that he's talking about, which would be better for the community. I know in your, your millage would be, you know, be for how, or your millage would be for how long now? It would be for four years, so if this radio thing that you're talking about would come to fruition, if we had our restoration money, we could put that in and pay for that, which would be an important thing. So, and, and to help them out, help you out to get that project going, if, if it comes to that. But this would give us the, the, these ability to do that, so, and I do think that, you know, and I don't, I hate to bring the jail up, because that's a sticky subject sometimes, but you know what? Half of that jail is old, I mean, old. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that Bill's going to identify that with, when he comes with his list, so. I'm kind of looking at Bill and I'm looking at Andy, get some good, good responses, I'm glad to hear from nine-one-one, because this all adds into it that what we can do to help, to help our different departments, so. Mr. Melburn.
I am in full support of the restoration millage proposal.
Likewise, full support.
Okay, we will bring that forward as far as the language, we'll work with Jamie, those are men to get that about, and we'll put that on for next, going to be an interesting meeting next month, next month. All right, item number five, and I probably should have brought it up before this, but anyway, item number five is also millage, request Sheriff's Road Patrol Millage. Under Sheriff Benalow, please. I take it back. Let me back up, we do have the millage for the Roscommon County levy for the four-point-six-oh, that's in front of you also, so we'll put that on promotion for next meeting, so. Okay, under Sheriff, how are you this morning?
Good, sir.
Better to be two of me.
So you're stuck with me today, Sheriff is away on vacation for spring break with his family. Our Road Patrol Millage, for those of you, I think most of you know, but it's been around longer than I have. It started back when the county was in trouble with the old county dump. And that it has continued, our Road Patrol has continued to function exclusively off of our Road Patrol Millage funds for decades. We have been operating at one-point-five mills for the last eight years since two thousand and fourteen. That occurred shortly before Sheriff Stevenson left, he, he asked the increased millage before he left office, and that's what we've continued to function under. Similar to what Vance was explaining, ours, as it has in the past, would renew back to the full one-point-five under the existing language that I provided to you. I should know that I believe that will be correct language, except for the figure of the raising and estimate the total amount, that will likely change when Jamie returns from vacation, that's based on the twenty-twenty-one figures and not the twenty-twenty-two figures. So, once she provides us updated numbers, that number will likely change, so this is just a draft of what that language will likely look like with a, with a different number there at the end. So, we would be requesting a renewal, we, similar to Vance, we renew every four years. This is the last year of our millage, we will be, with your permission, requesting renewal for another four years. The millage funds for the Road Patrol Law Enforcement Millage cover all Road Patrol deputies, our Road Patrol Lieutenant, one detective sergeant, a community policing officer, our K-9 officers, the county portion of a sting position, the county portion of the school resource officer that is not, not paid by the schools, the remainder of our secondary Road Patrol position, and a portion of our investigator that is assigned to the Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center. As well as almost all of our vehicles, fuel, training costs, all of those things are paid out of our Road Patrol millage. We are, I believe at this point, very much fiscally sound on that side of the House. Sheriff Stern has been very conscientious every year to take any extra funds and continue to carry those over looking into the future. I think as we've talked today through all the different financial projects that, that are going on, there's a lot of uncertainty with the amount of inflation that we're seeing right now, and personally, I don't see, see our county revenues keeping up with the inflation that we're meeting, so I think we all have a lot of work ahead of us. But I think, as of right now, the Sheriff's Office, the Road Patrol side sets in a very good situation. The, the jail is always an issue, I see, seen all of you in an email, I believe about month, two months ago, with our year-end figures from Lieutenant Beck. I think she's doing a really good job of trying to keep those numbers in check, jail's always going to cost us money, but I think we're in a much better position than we were four or five years ago with how much revenue was being created and how much we're having to spend out of general funds compared to where we were several years ago. So, I think that this will, as long as we continue to be successful in passing our Road Patrol millage, that will be, be fairly sound on both sides of the House. Am I open to any questions?
Um, I think, I think you're going to have the same, I think the same changes need to be changed to this language proposal that Vance ran into, because it can't be a renewal, it has to be a, a new one, because you're looking at a point, point, a point-five-oh, a renewal would have to be at a, correct me if I'm wrong here, a point-nine-nine-one-four, because Headley has already related to that. It would just have to be some word changes in there.
Okay, we can have that discussion.
Am I correct, am I wrong? Okay. All right, and you know, Vance pointed it out with his and he was correct, and I'd do it to be the same thing. Conceivably, I look at both yours and nine-one-one's as renewal, because they will, neither one of them are significant increases as far as that I, yes, there are increases, which is why it has to be in that language, but it's insignificant, so.
And we would be, historically, we've always been on the August primary election, if, if the board approves that again for twenty-two.
I just want to be, I just, if it's going on the ballot, I want to, and I want to be correct, or we all want it to be correct, okay, whether it's the clerk or whether it's, okay, we got it, got you, all right? So, any feeling from any commissioner at this time?
Yeah, my support.
Yeah.
And bring that forward with, we'll get the appropriate changes in there, we'll bring that forward for the next meeting also on the twenty-third, or excuse me, the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Okay. Man, I was anticipating a long, long work session. We will recess till ten o'clock for a regular meeting, thank you. Twenty twenty-two, like a welcome, special welcome to all our veterans today, so thanks for joining us. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Melvin, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Military members who so desire, hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, justice for all, ready, two.
Thank you, item number three, roll call of board members, please.
Here.
Melbourne.
Here.
Knight.
Here.
Welcome caller.
Here.
Hey, item number four, recognition of National Vietnam Veterans Day, War Veterans Day, Mark Melbourne and Ken Melbourne, so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Melbourne, but at this time, I would also like to, and it is on the agenda, but I would like to pass the motion in regards to the recognition of National Vietnam War Veterans Day.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, so when Mr. Melbourne is ready for us to do that, we can either do it now or we can do it later, however you want to do it on the resolution.
With your call, Mr. Chair.
Let's do the, let's do it now first and then we'll have the.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Things afterwards, all right? So, Michelle, would you, uh, please read motion number one, please?
Move to adopt resolution number two zero two dash zero three dash zero two, recognition of National Vietnam War Veterans Day. Whereas the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of two thousand and seventeen was signed into law by the forty-fifth U.S. President Donald J. Trump, designating every March twenty ninth as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. And whereas this date was chosen to be observed in perpetuity as March twenty ninth nineteen seventy-three was the day United States Military Assistance Command Vietnam was disestablished, and also the day that the last U.S. Combat Troops departed Vietnam. And whereas the Veteran War Veterans Recognition Act of two thousand and seventeen serves to honor all veterans and their families with no distinction between those who served in country, in theater, or stationed elsewhere during the Vietnam War period. And whereas the Roscommon County is home to approximately five hundred and fifty known Vietnam War period veterans to whom our county, state, and nation owe a large debt of gratitude for their service and sacrifice on behalf of the nation. And whereas on March twenty ninth two thousand and twenty-two, the fifth anniversary of the signing of the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize Roscommon County Vietnam War Veterans by expressly recognizing all who faithfully and honorably served in the Armed Forces of the United States during the Vietnam War. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, with heartfelt reverence and deep appreciation, thank all Roscommon County Vietnam veterans, their families, and their loved ones for their service, sacrifice, dedication, and devotion to our great nation, and recognize March twenty ninth as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. Thank you all.
Thank you, Michelle. With that, I'd like to ask for motion in a second, please.
Motion by Melbourne, Mr. Chair.
Second by Melvin.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Melbourne, to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash three dash two, recognition of National Vietnam War Veterans Day. All those in favor? Anybody by saying aye? Aye. Okay. All right, Mr. Melbourne? Mr. Melbourne? Thank you for the presentation, and we've got, I'd like to have everybody identify themselves if they would, please.
Chairman, we'd like to, we'd like to recognize Eleanor
I was gonna have all of them recognized. While they're getting situated, why don't you introduce the veterans and introduce themselves, please?
Lieutenant, I'm former third class, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam First Marine Air Wing.
Army, U.S. Marine Corps.
Earl Jones, U.S. Army, Korea Combat Medic Badge, nineteen sixty-six to nineteen sixty-eight.
You and I have something in common, I was a field medic also.
These gentlemen here today, and, and Mrs. Tucker are the reason why we're here today, why we're free today, because of their service sacrifice and dedication for our country, all for being here today.
Missed you. Oh, no, look at you.
Come on, John.
Here, you want me to move up the chair smart? We don't want to cover up your face.
And Chairman's gonna give a few minute breaks, so that if you need to leave right this, this point, this is an opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mrs. Tucker.
Okay. We'll call it back to order right now, and we will move down to, uh, item number five, approval of the agenda, please.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Oh, any further comment on the agenda from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Muckinbollard.
Yes.
Knight.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Okay, item number six, public comment, agenda items only. Any public comments this regards to the agenda, sir? There's nothing under unfinished business, and I haven't got to it yet.
On the agenda.
I know what's on.
Army is, there's going to be an update from, uh, the controller, I'm sure, on, uh, litigation, that's part of the unfinished business, this is an ongoing unfinished business.
Uh, I'm not to the Administrator Controller report either yet.
Well, that's part of the agenda. I, I would ask the indulgence, I mean, there are no other speakers, I don't think that are gonna be speaking in this, I mean.
And are you gonna speak at the next public comment also?
Absolutely, I don't know that, I, I talked to also.
You're killing me here.
I can help you with this, but I do not have an update for them on litigation included in my controller's report, because I have not written one yet.
Well, it's unfinished business.
It's not unfinished business, Eric, it's, it's not on our agenda, it's not on, it's not, there is nothing on our agenda, there's nothing on our agenda about what you're talking about. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna allow it. Okay, we've got, I'm Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you. Item seven, Administrator Controller Report.
Traditionally, I give a legislative, or I give both a legislative and a update to you on the lawsuits. They are ever-changing in the last week and a half, um, so I do not have a complete update for you. And I forgot to write a report, so I'm going off the cuff right now. Um, quick legislative update for you. We do have two bills that are pending that could be a very positive impact for us. One is a change to the secondary road patrol funding structure. Um, currently, it is a certain portion of revenues from tickets, basically, that are written. This would change it to a certain amount, a certain dollar amount of specific set aside funding, so that the secondary road patrol would no longer have this wavering effect. Um, and it is, it is required by the state for, for that type of interactions. Um, additionally, there is the legislation on the funding grants for unfunded liability that has moved out of the House and is moving into the Senate. Um, we are working on our updated OPAP numbers for the retiree healthcare, that small portion that we offer um, for retirees in the union. And that portion will be ready, um, hopefully within the next thirty days, and then we can move into funding sources for that, because that is, um, going to be step four of whether or not you qualify for the grant, and just a good idea fiscally for us anyhow. We have a lot of moving parts in personnel. Uh, tomorrow, our, uh, work, work group for the compensation policy will be working to look at one, two, three job descriptions, um, that need placement and or, and or reevaluation within our current, um, structure pay grades. And then we did have a request from, um, the sheriff to have that committee review the, uh, union position of corrections officers and correction corporals. Um, that was driven by a recent ad from Mesaki County where they were seeking for help, and that is one of our comparable counties, so we'll have a lot of information coming back from them. Um, Clerk Stevenson has filled her open position. I, uh, have also been informed by Mary Beebe, our prosecuting attorney, she has been carrying an open, um, assistant prosecutor seat, and she will be filling that, she is going to actively start looking to fill that now. We do have a judge appointment for the eighty-second District Court. We will have that person starting on April eleventh. Um, Troy Daniel is currently our person who oversees the MIDC attorneys, so we have had to, um, quickly kind of scramble through on that. I had a attorney in mind that I thought would be very good, but the other two partners for MIDC would like me to utilize the same attorney that they have in Ogumaw County. So I have, uh, acquiesced to that request, and we'll give that a six-month trial, um, to see how that goes. Uh, hopeful there will be minimal. My biggest issue is what happens as far as, uh, attorney, yes, sir.
When is, is there a swearing-in ceremony scheduled, or is it already occurred?
It has not been scheduled yet. Um, the District Court Administrator is currently on vacation, so I believe it will be April eleventh. And I don't know if somebody has anything different, I will find out for sure and let you know, though, when that will be, but yes, Mr. Danos will be sworn in at this point. Obviously, um, that position will be on the ballot again in November, so everything's always up in the air as it seems, so. We are working to get the, uh, new contracted MIDC attorney up and running at this point. Um, overall, it's just been a continuous review of financials. Um, I'm looking at some software right now that's a fairly minimal cost, but would take all of our budget data and auditing data and put it into a more public-friendly manner of reviewing that information and understanding the trends, um, and the needs, what really comes out of general fund. If we're, uh, been talking about Headley, I think that that's one thing that, you know, people don't, don't understand, that, that little pot of money that comes out, um, it's a little to everybody in their taxes, but that pot of money funds your courts, your jails, your clerk's office, your treasurer's office, your housing departments, your marine patrols, your ORV, snow, uh, patrols, it funds your equalization department, so all of these moving parts, um, that are much, much largely, larger and more costly, um, and grow every year, so I think that information would be, um, be a nicer nicer package in the software, but I'm not a hundred percent sure where I'm gonna get the money to pay for it yet, so when I come up with that, I will bring it to you guys for approval, and that is all.
Any questions for the Administrator Controller Report from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, item eight, correspondence, we've got, uh, A, twenty twenty-two Annual Conference at NACO in DC. B is NACO Health Counties Forum, Healthy Counties Forum. C is the MAC Legislative Update for March eleventh, the week of March eleventh. Any questions in regards to correspondence from any commissioner at this time? Item nine, monthly department reports, we've got the Animal Control and the Animal Shelter Report for February, their statistics. D is the Brownfield Development Authority Meeting Minutes from twelve fifteen and one nineteen. Sheriff's Department Report, item C, February Monthly Report with the village and the extra village reports. Uh, item D, and that is, um, that's the health, Mental Health Department, correct? Thank you, Julie. Their board minutes, and their, um, committee as a whole minutes, and their they had two committee of whole minutes, and then they had a board, their board agendas are included. And item E is a veterans' report, um, or I believe that's probably for February, is that right, Mr. Melbourne?
Yes, and on that note, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, you asked me to, uh, inform you of the number of trips and the cost of transporting veterans to medical appointments for the last year. And that is fourteen thousand, one hundred and four dollars and sixty-one cents in a total of two hundred and sixty-four veterans transported to medical appointments.
Oh, good, thank you. And that's through the Transit Department, correct?
Through the Roscommon Minibus.
Okay. I actually did that pretty pretty fiscally responsible, appears to me. Anybody else want to see this? Okay, thank you, Ken. All right, under item number ten, visitors, do we have, uh, Mr. O'Rourke here, I didn't see him before, don't see him now, okay.
To recognize Evelyn Macey, she's our veteran service officer for the county of Roscommon, appointed by the governor.
Hey, Evelyn, nice to see you, graduation, a new appointment?
An older point, an older appointment, but Evelyn, who, who appointed, was it, was it Gretchen or Jennifer? Governor, Governor Whitmer, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, thank you. Unfinished new business, Housing Department Report, Laura McKillop. Good morning. There it's on, it's on.
All right, I think each of you have a copy of the report I put on there before we started meeting today. So, you probably have seen this before. This is all of our funding that we've received through the year and, um, monies that we've dispersed to help our community. Uh, the first item is a property improvement program. If you remember last year, I told you Chemical Bank, when the other bank took over for Chemical, they ran our property improvement program. The new bank had enough of their own, um, loans and what, uh, services to do, so they decided not to do that, so the state does not have a low So the state does not have a local bank that we can offer that program through. That was for our higher-income families, and they could get loans to do different programs. So, of course, I did not get any fees for that this year. Under the next is our Program Income Received. These are monies we receive from our outstanding loans with the county or assisting people with their repairs. Community Development Block Grant, we received ninety-three thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. Ridgefield Township Loan, we received four hundred and fifty dollars. Roscommon County Funds, we had limited funds in there, and we received those funds back of seven hundred dollars. And we did have one property that foreclosed through tax sale, and we were able to recoup the one thousand, six hundred and four dollars from that sale for our loan. Next area are loans and grants, the monies that we did loan out this year. Again, we did not have the PIP loans. Community Development Block Grant, this is Program Income Loans. As we receive the funds in, we are able to reloan that out, and the county obtains a mortgage to that. We were able to provide sixty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine thousand. Our Neighborhood Impact Program is a grant program through Federal Home Loan Bank. That program, we loaned out, or I'm sorry, we were able to fund fifteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Through DHS and homeowners, we received two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars to put towards those projects. And of course, we had our First Presbyterian Youth Group come this last year, so they're a church group from Illinois that comes and provides labor materials, they have their camp expense and travel expenses, and no cost to our homeowners. The Senior High Youth Group comes and provides the services at no charge. So with that, we had twenty-four thousand, seven eighty-six in labor materials and camp and travel expenses of twenty-four, three ninety. So they actually put a total of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-six into their, entered to our county last year. So we had a total of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten dollars in funding that we were able to provide to the homeowners. Last year, as you can see, we were one thirty-four, so pretty close, and they do not have labor. The labor on that was for Randy Christner, they do have a local contractor that comes in, and if there's anything they can't do to finish up. So we did not have a lot of labor on those projects. On the second page, if you want to go to before the year-end totals, that splits out all of the projects that I just just sent you to equal the one hundred and twenty-seven, five-ten. That shows where everything went, and the contractors we were able to use for that. And the admin, we were able to turn over eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars to the county. Of course, I do not get admin for the work trip or for the grant monies that we get in. Outstanding loans with the county, one million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars the county holds in liens. We did receive thirty-nine dollars in interest of our money that we have in our account. Again, we received a total of ninety-six thousand, sixty-seven dollars in program income. We only had one share of deed with our lower-income families, that's not too bad, thirteen thousand, one ninety-four we lost to the first mortgage companies that foreclosed on their lien. Eleven thousand, four seventy-nine in admin was dispersed. We were able to do eighteen projects and assist thirty-six household members. And I just have a little summary at the bottom there. They had incomes of nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars for the year, and the highest was thirty-seven, eight thirty-six. We helped anywhere between ages fourteen to eighty-five years old, nineteen of them were disabled. We were able to accomplish one furnace, two wells, two septics, four roofs, one electrical issue, a handicap-accessible bath, one handicap-accessible ramp. We assisted through the grant money to provide four homes with new windows, one with door, one with siding, one with insulation, and two decks were done through the group. Well, that is my year-end report. Any questions or comments on that? Yes, Mark?
I, I can tell you on a personal note, I sit on the Action Agency Board in Traverse City, and I, you know, I get up in the morning and I turn on the TV seven-four and affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. You've done an amazing job.
Thank you.
Amazing job, and, and every year I see the reports come, I know Mr. Russo is, is the commissioner involved in that, but you guys do an amazing job.
Thank you.
And I, and behalf of the people that I serve in our entire county, you really make a difference.
Well, I appreciate that. It's a little harder on my own.
It's not just a job.
Oh, no, yes. I got a couple hugs this week that really makes my job.
Thank you for your passion.
That's why I do it, and I was just talking with him this morning, we ask at different things. I do not work with rental units or getting people in, but I try to, you know, get them to the right area. And I try to make it to the collaborative board, but on my own, it's easy, and they do have more programs or grant, but I can't apply for those with what I'm doing here.
And I don't see that lightly, it's not just a job, it's a passion.
Oh, yes, my peeps, I, thank you.
Thank you.
But I will just, a quick update on current situation. Again, we have one point seven, almost one point eight million out in receivables. As we collect that money and we're able to use it, the state goes on a fiscal year from July through June. So last year during that time, we collected a hundred and three thousand, five hundred and forty-two, and we, then we can use it the following year. So out of those funds, I still have forty-two thousand to do extra rehab up through the end of June. Eleven thousand, hopefully, to go over the county with admin on that. And then so far this year, from July, I've collected forty-five thousand, and then we'll continue to collect that. I also just had my workshop last week for the Federal Home Loan Bank. Those are grant monies that go to the homeowners. NIF is our Neighborhood Impact Program, that they can borrow or grant up to seventy-five hundred dollars. You can see I did, I think, about three of them last year. That money is not even leaned to the home or paid back, it is granted to them. Windows, doors, they can even do gutters on that, and it has to be, you know, to their home, it has to be a resident that's living there. They also have Accessibility Modification Program. That one is to do handicap-accessible items, they can go up to ten thousand dollars with that. That funding can do handicap-accessible bathroom ramps, widen doors, things like that as they need them.
Commissioner Russo, you're head of that committee, anything you'd like to add?
Not a thing, Dave. So I just, night great board, they've been on, I've been here almost thirty years now, and some of my board members were on there prior to, and they are just excellent on there. I think the least one, maybe ten years or so, oh, yeah, and they all ask questions and that just readily fun, but it's getting harder because the projects are going up, obviously, the cost of everything has gone up, or we're saying what, a two-by-four, like from seven to twenty-one now, so obviously, the cost of everything that we're trying to do has gone up, and hasn't been easy staying, you know, within our limits, but the board allows us to go, we, just because of cost-wise now.
One of the things, Laura, that your report doesn't account for is the people that come to you that you aren't able to assist. But that you help to the best of your ability anyhow. There is a lot of work between our Veterans Office and our Housing Department that, that goes unseen unless you're in the hallway, where Laura walks them down to Veterans, where Lori or Heath or now Alicia will be able to, you know, assist them and move them forward. She's great at keeping in touch with her people, frequently get phone calls, thanking us.
Get a couple of my peeps down there.
We had a couple of her, she calls them her peeps that come down. And I know Laura, it's, you know, I've been here eight years, and I would say when I first started, I didn't really understand what housing did. And I know it's been kind of a rough road for you, your department has definitely felt the crunch. But I just wanted to say thank you for sticking with us and for still, you know, giving your heart to, to your people that come in.
It is rewarding most of the time. There are glitches, but I do, they can't get the help anywhere else, and you see that with nine thousand a year, even if you don't have a mortgage payment, how do you pay your utilities and keep up with the maintenance of the home, so I appreciate you keeping me, keeping the Housing Commissioner around.
Okay, good report, Laura, good, very good report, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything? I think you're done. Okay. Motiones and resolutions already taken? Committee reports, please. Mr. Muckenthaler.
Yes, I had Animal Control on the tenth and Collaborative Board on the sixteenth.
All right. Yep, you can go next. Mr. Melvin?
Animal Control, COA, NMCAA. And I'd like to point out, too, that the flag is back here. I know that Mr. Hamp asked about that years ago, did you see the flag back there, Krista? And on a personal note, I'd like to thank the chairman and the board for allowing me to, to author that resolution that was, that was co-authored and co-author, or co-sponsored by my friend, Kenny Melvin, and I'd like to appreciate, like to thank Jody for her wordsmithing and for Michelle for reading it. It did, it was, it was quite impactful to see you get emotional toward the area. I think I spent about three hours on that one paragraph to try to get it right, and, and at the end of the day, not only do we owe our services, our, our, our lives often and our freedom to those in Vietnam, but also to those who served in all these other wars and those who are serving today in harm's way. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to read, to author that resolution.
Hey, Mr. Melvin?
Well, moving, piggybacking right on what Mark was talking about, about people in harm's way right now. I would like to redirect any honor and respect accorded to me today for being a Vietnam veteran onto the Americans that have placed themselves in harm's way right now. They're not military, some of them are ex-military, like you, Bob, that was a medic, and they are over in Ukraine in great danger to themselves as medics taking care of wounded women and children. It's a terrible situation. I saw on the news yesterday the utmost respect and honor for a woman who transported herself on her own to Ukraine. She was taking care of wounded civilians. She was injured, her face was full of glass, she had scars and blood on her face. And her leg was in a walking splint, and she was reloading her medical bag to go out and treat more people. Those, those kinds of people, we need to know about them. We need to honor them when they come back, if they come back, but we're gonna probably start hearing about some of them that are not, because they placed themselves in harm's way and, and made the, paid the ultimate price for humanitarian aid, not military, but they, they answered the humanitarian call, and I'm, I'm deeply proud of them for what they've done. On a lighter note, I attended the My Sims Refresher Course on Monday, the fourteenth, that's the emergency management of computer system that you use in emergency situations. I found out that Michelle has resigned her position as PIO, and I'd like to thank you for your years of service in that position, and you will be dearly missed. You did a very good job. Also, on Tuesday, the twenty-second, yesterday, I attended a noon luncheon to celebrate Alicia Pastel's passing the course for accreditation as a Veteran Service Officer. She did a very good job. Not everyone passed this course. And I just made a brief appearance. I sat in the corner until Jody called me out, I have a, a non-contagious medical situation, and to, to make everybody feel better, when she called me out and said, you look like crap, I, I left the room. So, so it's, and I would not be here today if it wasn't for the the Vietnam recognition.
And as far as my report, had the agenda meeting last week on, on the tenth. Met with Steve from the Transit Authority on Monday, Ridgefield Township meeting Tuesday, and the MSU Advisory Meeting with the power outage we had last week. I wasn't able to log into that, I'm not sure they had it, I think the time was screwed up anyway. They had down twelve-thirty to two o'clock, and I believe it was two o'clock to three-thirty, so I'm not exactly sure what happened there, so. That's the extent of my report. Now, on to number fourteen. Public comment. Mr. Ostrigen first, because he.
Holton Lake Authority Board Meeting went really well. Oh, they were confused with the language.
And Mr. Chair, I think Mrs. Fry has a comment, too, please.
Okay. I'll get to y'all, take your time. Mr. Ostrigen's gonna, gonna wait. He's gonna happily, he's gonna happily wait.
I have some news from the Commission on Aging. Several items that I thought the Commission might be interested in. The first is that we have an employee who is our Activities Director Coordinator named Deborah Looney. She was actually selected by Nine and Ten News for an honor for being, this being Women's Month. The four, which is the program that Nine and Ten does, honored four women, and Ms. Looney was one of them. And I'd just like to read to you very briefly, it's only a sentence or two, on what was sent in regarding Ms. Looney. She was nominated by one of the ladies that are centers. Ms. Looney is, is a credit. She has impacted the roles of the Roscommon County Commission on Aging by enriching the lives of seniors in Holton Lake, Roscommon, and St. Helen. So that was the brief description of what was given in for her, but I think that's quite an honor for a woman to have in our county being selected as one of only four for the television station to be at this program. So it will be on tomorrow, and it'd be really nice if people would watch that, and Ms. Looney will be then representing the Commission on Aging. Just a couple of things I wanted to let you know. Been working on the health insurance along with dental vision and life for the employees at the Commission on Aging. Was able to get a new company to represent us and saving the Commission nearly ninety thousand dollars a year. Thought you might be interested in that because of the mileage that we receive, we wanted you to know that we are taking the money that we get seriously and trying to be a good representative of that money and it being spent. On that same note, the Commission is going to go green, we are going to replace all of our fluorescent lights with LED lights. We have approximately one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six of the bulbs like these in our four facilities. That, too, was looking at going to be saving us several thousand dollars over the year in reducing our costs for electricity. Our St. Patrick's Day celebration was a big hit this year, it's so nice to have the centers and having people come in. St. Helen had thirty-two participants, normally, we have about ten on any other day. Roscommon had thirty-three, normally have about fifteen. Holton Lake had eighty-two, we normally have about forty at that facility. We're also seeing growth in our Meals on Wheels and on our in-home services, so we're getting back up to the numbers for pre-COVID, and we're really happy about that. We want to be out into the community and helping our seniors in any way we can. And the last bit of information that I have for you is today, we're having a chili cook-off at all of our centers. That is a competition between the centers, and there will be a vote taken, it would be very, very nice if the commissioners might take their lunch. And anyone else here who would like to take their lunch at one of our Commission on Aging centers, two dollars and fifty cents for anybody over sixty, five dollars for anybody under sixty.
Pretty much everybody here.
And so, I wasn't gonna say it again, Mark. And so, I wasn't going to say it again, Mark.
Maybe Michelle and Jody.
But we basically will have that chili cook-off today starting at noon. And that was all I had. That's all I have for today.
Very question for you. I asked this last, I believe last meeting you were here. Did you ever find out what your fund balance is? I was inquiring about it two weeks ago.
I'm sorry. I did not remember to bring you that number.
Okay.
I'll get it for you. I'll get it for you, Mr. Chair.
All right. No problem.
I had lunch over at the Roscommon Center the other day. Dr. Zubik was there to give a demonstration, which I thought was very wonderful. And then my son and I went over to the Holton Lake Center the other day. He wasn't so enamored by it, but he did play the piano at the, on the piano during their little lunch break. So he really liked the mac and cheese.
All right.
Also, on the Deb Looney, I don't, I don't know if I said this before, but I'll repeat it again since you brought her up. The honor she's receiving, she paid for and sponsored the last Veterans Coffee Hour. I mean, she pays for the coffee, the bananas, the donuts, the cream, the sugar. She paid for that on her own. Thank her very much.
Anybody that doesn't know Deb, she's a little firecracker. She is on the go. I don't know how she has the honor that she does, but she's an amazing asset to our organization and well deserves this honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The floor is yours, sir. Five minutes.
Victory lap. How low are legal system? A local court might get it wrong, but they can be reversed. Three judges at the Court of Appeals unanimously said you were wrong in how you are managing the lake levels on Higgins and gave our local court a lot of discretion on how we're going to proceed. Do you realize that this has been going on over three years because you passed an illegal resolution to stop the complaints regarding the mismanagement of the levels on Higgins Lake? Wouldn't it have been much easier to ask Eagle for a permit modification as thousands of people have asked? The appeals decision should be an embarrassment for this commission. That being said, Commissioner Melvin needs to resign from managing the lake levels or he needs to be removed. We need to reestablish the dam committee Commissioner Melvin disbanded and let them do the job. Having a dam committee would certainly take some heat off this commission and the statutes have provided for doing just that. Level management guidelines also need to be established. The guidelines need to take the entire watershed into account. It's clear Commissioner Melvin doesn't know what he's doing or he's mismanaging the levels intentionally. I believe it's intentional. One example of his mismanagement was highlighted by the Court of Appeals, includes my point. Here's what they said, quote, "We disagree with the trial court in that the 1982 court order had a discretionary component built into it. The order language that the trial court referenced was, 'In adjusting the lake levels as herein provided, the person or persons responsible for such operation shall make every reasonable effort to take into consideration stream flows of the lake projected and projected snow melt runoff within the watershed as well as providing minimum release during refill operations,' end quote." The very language that the local court relied on isn't even being followed by Commissioner Melvin. He isn't taking snow melt into account as we barely have any snow on the ground right now. And he has yet, and he still has all the gates wide open, releasing water downstream to Holton. While the USGS reported yesterday that Holton is 7.2 inches above the maximum winter drawdown and Higgins is only 1.8 inches over its maximum winter drawdown. Commissioner Melvin knows all this, but he still has the gates wide open. Why? This is just one example of Commissioner Melvin's ineptitude. He needs to be removed. A couple of the gates should be closed immediately so Higgins can adjust closer to the summer level. This will allow the water table to begin recharging. The landmass around Higgins is like a sponge and keeping the water level so low during the winter has made it more difficult to reach and maintain the summer level. Commissioner Melvin has also violated the maximum winter drawdown for considerable periods this past year when it's completely within his control to avoid the illegal drawdown. His violations were totally preventable. He's more concerned with keeping the winter levels much lower than they should be to the detriment of maintaining the summer level, which hasn't been reached in over a year. It's the opposite of how the level should be managed. The Court of Appeals has ruled and you must, that you must maintain the legal level. That is the level you must maintain. The legal level is the summer level. There are no statutes requiring you to maintain a winter drawdown. In fact, the court order's language makes the winter drawdown optional. Read what the court order says. I'll be talking about that later. Commissioner Melvin has complained in the past that he's afraid of being sued by lakefront owners on certain parts of the lake if the levels went over the summer level, even by insignificant amounts, which rarely happens. Well, now you've just been sued and you've lost because of his lack of judgment. When is this commission going to stop listening to Commissioner Melvin? He should have lost all credibility with you. Now you have some direction from the Court of Appeals about your duty and we're going to get to the bottom of why you haven't been able to do your job pretty soon. We're looking forward to asking a number of you a lot of questions. Finally, the resolution you passed requiring two-thirds of the lakefront owners to petition and pay $1,000 before you would consider filing for a change in the permit, needs to be repealed immediately. The resolution is illegal and it's next on my list. Commissioner Melvin was the, Commissioner Melbourne was the only one to get it right when he voted against the illegal resolution, just like his recent vote against restricting public comment. The resolution is a clear misrepresentation of the statute. The two-thirds petition requirement is for establishing a legal lake level, not what needs to be done before you will maintain it. As the Court of Appeals stated, it's your duty to maintain the legal level. It's not discretionary. If we have to file another lawsuit to have you repeal the resolution and we win, you will be obligated to pay our attorney's fees and it won't be cheap. Check with your legal counsel. As you know, the prosecutor, Mayor Bibby, worked with a resolution with Controller Valentino on the last one. And I get another legal opinion. It needs to be repealed. Thank you. I'm also going to pass off something for the next meeting. This is what I was going to handle in my second talk, but if you guys get a chance to review it. Has to do with the wind levels and ice push. We've been getting a lot of this. Do you want one, Mr. Melvin?
Looking out to Zoomland right now. Been a public comment?
Hello.
Leroy, is that you?
It's Leroy Johnston.
Actually, Leroy, go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the commissioners and Commissioner Melvin. You guys do a largely thankless task and I think you do it pretty well. I think you run our county very well, as a matter of fact. And I've said this before, but I'm going to say it again. I've lived here for 63 years now. I can go out and do a survey in the community at Holton Lake. I probably can do one at Higgins Lake and Lake St. Helen too. And there's a bunch of people that will say, ah, the lake's too high. And there's a bunch of people that will say the lake's too low. This never changes from year to year. I'm going to make the suggestion again, I know we're tied into trying to get some of the the infrastructure money that should be coming from the government and that's going to be used for our lake level controls. But I'm going to say it again, I think we should do away with all the lake level controls and just let nature take its course as it was before we put in the lake level controls. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments in Zoomland?
Hi, Adrian Bruce here. I am rather inquiring than commenting. There is a community of people, myself included, down the stretch of North 18 in Higgins Township who do not have access to high-speed broadband internet. And I have been looking into it between, you know, the different reliable companies such as Charter or even Cherry Capital Communications up in Traverse City, who typically works with counties to expand broadband internet to rural areas. Now, my home that I purchased in late 2018 is actually a mile and a half from the Health Department, the Roscommon County Health Department and the Animal Shelter, who both rely heavily on Charter internet and we do not have access at my house. Now, normally I would just resort to satellite internet. But I've kind of made a big fuss publicly about some robberies and stuff that have happened in my home. And it has kept us from getting a reliable security system. As right now, I currently live two and a half hours away and do not have the ability to monitor the home 24/7. Now, with this being a retirement community, you know, empty houses sit all year long, or rather, at least in the winters. And it's slightly frustrating that I'm not able to get the internet access that I need to protect my home. And I just didn't know, I was reading through the city plan from 22 to 25. I didn't know if there was any funding, like was just mentioned by Leroy, in the infrastructure to help with this. I've spoken with many people who have lived in that area for a long time and are out of options and would like access to things such as that. Personally, I plan on relocating to the area in about a month and I work remotely, as you can see. And things like that are very important to our livelihood. And we're not really in a rural area, you know, that eight-mile stretch there between, or 10 miles between Roscommon and Holton Lake, that's not super rural. I know people who have lived there for a very long time and have had to struggle with this. And I was just wondering if you guys had any comments or thoughts on what our options might be in that arena?
The only thing I can respond to you is, is we are working with Cherry Capital and there already is a project going on in the county right now. Unfortunately, it's not in your area yet.
Right. Yep. No, I have worked with them or I have spoken with them about the one towards Gladwin further. I think it's on South 18, correct?
Correct. You're correct.
Great.
All right. All right. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, wait a minute. I'll give you my contact phone number. It's 989-390-9500. I'm in the same situation as you are and I would be happy to talk with you after the meeting about your situation.
Just to make sure I have that correct, you said 390-9500?
Yes.
And your name is?
Ann Melvin.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Andy, do we have anybody else out there? Anybody else for public comment here in front of me?
Can I say another thing?
Leroy? Go ahead, Leroy.
For the lady that was just commenting on there, once we get enough 5G cell towers in this area, broadband shouldn't really be too much of an issue anymore. 5G will provide enough bandwidth over air to make up for broadband connection. So.
All right. Thank you, Leroy. Any public comment at this time? You know, I'm in such a generous mood. Since it's going to be 30 seconds, that's fine.
I was going to say, removing the dams, you got to talk to the people about the Sanford, Winstonville, about keeping those dams up.
Thank you for your comments.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion was made and it's already been seconded and, or motion was made and seconded, so. Thank you.